Wonderful, Namaste. Welcome to this study session, the first of several that we're going to be doing. And this one, we're going to be looking at the subject of contemplation. There are two other ones already booked. For meditation, we will also look at meditation. That will be on Sunday, the 17th of November, at the same time as this one. And then we will also look at self-inquiry in another session. That will be Sunday, the 15th of December, again, at the same time as this one. And all the dates are on the website, helenhamilton.org, if you need more information on that. So, welcome to this session. We have lots of time today to really go into contemplation and to go into why we need it and how to use it. It was an essential tool for me in my own awakening, in fact, a lifesaver. So if we spend some time, first of all, I'll explain about contemplation, the way I'm using that word as well, and what it is and why we need it. And then we'll have lots of time to, I'll open it up live here. We can practise together using the technique live here today for anyone that wants to. So we have also someone that can translate Spanish questions to me, as well as the pillars interpretation, Olga will do that for us. So we can take questions from Spanish and English too. So contemplation is one of the core teachings that we work with, excuse me, in our community and in our Sangha as a whole. And contemplation is really a way to, we could say it is a way to stop being what we are not, how to unravel and dissolve the energies, the ways of thinking of a separate person, a separate being. And even though we are coming to see that that separate person didn't, doesn't exist and never did, still, even after a powerful seeing for me of who I really am already and always was the infinite self, there were still these old ways of thinking that persisted for quite some time. So in the consciousness that is my real self, there are no beliefs, no thoughts, no, nothing to think about even. But just because we've had a seeing of that, or even before we've had a seeing of that, our old thought structures still remain intact for most of us for quite some time. So I can see who I am and yet still be thinking as my old idea of myself. And this is why we find as our awakening deepens, contemplation might be more and more helpful along the journey. Because we might be having these two experiences where maybe we're getting clearer on one hand through our meditation and through our self-inquiry, who we really are, formless, insubstantial awareness and that which is everywhere at all times. And then when that seeing has come and gone, that moment has happened, we might go automatically back into thinking about life as a separate person, mainly thinking about separate beings, other beings, thinking of ourself as a someone, thinking of things that are separate to us, that we may want or need, like patience or time, money, energy, and thinking of any old ways. So contemplation is really a technique that deals directly with the nature of our thought process in duality and dissolves it as we work with it. So it helps to have an overview of why we think like a separate being in the first place. And then from there, it's going to get clearer how we can help remove that, dissolve that. So when we begin to, first before we have a human body, there's just the infinite consciousness. And that infinite consciousness is everywhere, at all times. There is nothing other than it. It's like a vast ocean and it's just one continuous consciousness. So as that consciousness emerges in the shape of a human being, it starts to identify as that human being, as a form, as the body. Starts to really believe, I am this body. So it's gone from knowing itself to be the whole universe, the whole formless consciousness. When I'm saying consciousness, you could substitute that for any word you like, silence, stillness, presence, divinity, infinite self. It's gone from knowing itself to be that infinite one being to thinking itself to be a tiny, tiny entity in the middle of this ocean of consciousness. And the more that it thinks about itself as a separate entity, as soon as it identifies as the body, the body seems to be separate to everything else and everyone else. Then it starts to think in terms of duality. And the indivisible ocean of consciousness really starts to believe it's a someone. And it divides its experience then into in here and out there. So everything going on in here is inside, we could say, and everything else in the entire universe is out there. And for most of us, that seems to make sense, seems to keep making sense until we start to wake up to the truth of who we are. So our problems, our karmic patterns, our samskars, whatever we want to call those. If we look at the nature of those, they're all coming from a belief in a separate person. And sometimes those karmic patterns are so overwhelming and so many strong emotions coming, that we tend to get really confused about how to resolve them. Our mind starts thinking about everything in terms of me here, a separate person, and everyone else and everything else being out there. So even when we come to have an understanding that we are one, one being, there's only one entity here experiencing this satsang, this study session through many, many bodies. Still, we might go back automatically to thinking in terms of inside and outside. I'm going to give a few examples from my own life. When I, just to help clarify this, and you can think about your own challenges right now and see how they fit in like this. So even though I was seeing in my meditation, my self-inquiry more and more, that I was just one formless, no-thingness that was everywhere and indivisible. That seeing couldn't be lived because immediately my thought process went back into duality afterwards. So a seeing of my oneness and then immediately I was thinking in two-ness. So when there wasn't enough money, which was often the case, then I would think, I'm scared because there's not enough money in my life, I need more money. Or when there were certain people that weren't kind to me, or even were quite mean to me, there was a sense of shame in here because of what they were saying on the outside. So the key thing to understand, the one thing to understand, to undo all of our karmic patterns, to allow them to dissolve, is that our thought process is happening in terms of cause and effect. Two things, a cause and an effect. So I'll explain this a little bit more, just to help us come to understand. So our mind says, if you take the situation of my fear and the money, my mind said, I'm scared in here because of this thing out there, the lack of money. And that's how perhaps most people would agree that this thing in my world, in my experience, is causing the way I feel inside. So just to be clear, there's something out there, the cause, and the effect in here is the emotion I'm feeling, fear in this case. Or the other person out there being, saying something mean is the cause. And the shame, and sometimes anger, sometimes fear also, is the effect. So the cause and the effect are two different things in our mind. So we've just, even intellectually understood or experientially, if we've seen, that there's only one thing, one no-thingness that cannot be divided, one consciousness, one presence, the presence. And then in the very next moment, I'm going back into thinking in terms of two-ness, cause and effect. It took me a very long time to really understand why my karmic patterns were getting worse, bigger as my awakening was deepening. So the more and more I'd seen who I really am, the more peace I was feeling sometimes, joy was starting to come, a little bit of love. But on the other side, the rest of my day, outside of my meditation, the rest of my waking state, there was a lot of fear, anger, jealousy, despair, shame, all kinds of emotions. So I was living these two experiences, one of what's real for a short time each day, and then a very contrasting what's unreal, the old self. And it became, it became very, very unbearable. And if you've experienced this yourself, you'll know that it's, it's really not, it's a horrible place to hang out in our awakening, to be stuck in. So all we need to remember about everything I've just said is that our karmic patterns are based in duality. And that's why they're getting bigger, cause and effect, two things separate to each other. The cause and the effect are different, says the mind. When in reality, we know they must be the same, there can't really be a cause and an effect. So how we work with this then is by simply undoing that way of thinking. I'm not scared because of the money situation. There's just fear here, for no reason externally. There's fear and the financial situation is a reflection, a reflection of this fear inside. Or because the shame here, the mirror image of that is this person, this other person, who is really me, treating me this way. Because I don't think I'm good enough, everyone else has to treat me that same way. So we, we take away the because, I'm not scared because, I'm not scared, excuse me, I'm not ashamed because we just have the emotion itself. And we're not ignoring what's going on in our experience, of course. But we can't resolve the situation, the financial situation, or whatever it is, maybe you're struggling with your job or your family or anything at all, the health of the body. We can't resolve that while we're still insisting that there's duality, there's two things in our thought process. So instead, we look at the fear, the emotion itself. What if I'm just scared? What if there's no external reason for my fear? What if the fear, then, the emotion, is coming from something deeper inside, some unconscious belief inside, deep down, which then shows up as an emotion and then shows up as an outer world experience? So every emotion that we feel, every negative emotion that we feel has a story underneath it, a belief that we can find. And then we can turn it into a question. Contemplation then is simply looking at the emotion, unhooking it from the thing we think that's causing it, just for a moment in our thought process, asking that emotion what it wants to tell us and then turning that into a question. So in my example, I asked this fear, what, what is it you need to tell me? What are you trying to show me? And there was this deep sensation, deep knowing inside, I'm not safe, I'm really in danger. And something inside was always in a fight or flight response. And when I asked shame also, not shame because of what those people are saying, just shame, knowing that the other people's behaviour is a reflection, a mirror image, and that they can't act any differently while I have ideas about myself inside. Because I am, just like you are, the infinite consciousness. Anything I believe to be true, I'm going to keep experiencing both as an emotion and as an outer world experience. So I asked the shame, what do you want to tell me? And I really, really didn't want to look at shame. But eventually it said, you don't deserve to exist. It said, I don't deserve to exist, which is quite shocking when I first saw that somewhere, not inside me, the consciousness, but still inside the mind, the egoic separate, egoic sense of self, the separate sense of self. This is how I felt on some level. So I had two versions of myself, one that knew I was free and worthy and infinite and safe. And another version, the older way of thinking, a tangled ball of energy deep down in my gut that said, I'm really not safe and I'm really not good enough. And I really feel very limited, blocked. Anger as well, anger said to me, I can't get what I want, I'm blocked, I'm limited. And I went through, I look at every emotion that I was feeling, despair, said that there's really no point in trying, I can't ever get what I need. And you know, all of these emotions. And then I turned this into a question, is it really true, I'm not safe? To my egoic sense of self, it seems very true. I, I don't have enough money, how could I possibly be safe? How am I going to survive, says ego. But as the infinite self, we can ask this question, is that really true for me? Is that really true, given who I'm now seeing myself to be in my spiritual pathway? And as we begin to ask this question, this is contemplation really. So we just ask the emotion, find out what the emotion is, ask it what the belief is underneath, the story. And then we turn that into a question. And that questioning is best done for 30 days in a row because it takes 30 days to make a new habit of thinking. And as we're asking this question, we can't be believing the thought at the same time. So I can't be believing I'm not safe and therefore keep experiencing it and asking the question, is it really true, I'm not safe, at the same time. In fact, while I'm asking any question, I can't be believing any thought at all. So what we will do after I've finished explaining is we'll go through some examples from anyone that wants to do it with me. And we'll look at the emotion and then we'll look at the story and we'll look at how to work with that question. Contemplation then is simply the art of asking a question for five or 10 minutes a day and allowing all the answers to come. So we're not doing what we do in our human life. If I ask you a question, you have to give me an answer. There's one answer, that's the right answer, and that's that. Here we are, asking a question. Just because it feels good to challenge this belief, we'll begin to feel better immediately as we challenge this belief. Unknowingly, our whole life, we have begun to, we've been living with the effect of this. Our whole life has been an experience of I'm not safe or I'm not good enough, or I don't deserve to exist. Because we're not really a separate being, we never have been, the whole universe has to agree with what we're saying is true. And even if we don't know we're believing these thoughts, they're still functioning in our lives. And contemplation for me was the only way to bring them to the surface and let them come, be seen, and then challenge them consistently. So for me, five or 10 minutes a day, just asking this question and allowing all the answers. And answers are going to come in several different forms. So the first type of answer will be mind answers thoughts. So if we ask this question, is it really true, I'm not safe? Mind is going to say, of course you're safe, you are the infinite self. And it might also say, of course you're not safe at all. Have you seen the state of your life, your relationships, your finances? It will have many good thought answers and we treat them all the same. We also might have emotional answers, so we might have some fear or some other emotion. We might even have some peace, some sense of relief. Whichever emotional answers we get, we just welcome them, do our best to be with them. But coming back to the question always, is it really true, I'm not safe? We might have some sensation answers, we might feel a contraction in the body or we might have goosebumps somewhere on our skin, we might sneeze or cough or feel, suddenly become aware of some hunger in the body or something like that. All these are what we call sensation answers going on in the body. And lastly, perhaps the most unusual, we have external answers. So if I'm asking my question, is it really true, I'm not safe? And someone knocks on the door or my phone makes a noise or a dog barks outside or someone in the next room starts to talk and I can hear slightly, or the TV in the background or whatever is going on. All these are answers too. And even if we ask this question, is it really true, I'm not safe? And the infinite awareness suddenly becomes obvious or profound silence, we could just say that's a non-phenomenal answer, it's still the same as all answers. Not better or worse, there's no right or wrong answer and we're not needing to make any answer appear either. We're only asking the question, coming back to it, acknowledging the answers as they come in and staying with the question. So in fact, it's a way of asking a question and being with all answers. And when we are being with all answers, then we're pretty much living as the infinite self, which simply allows everything to be as it is. If you think about it, the only reason we really suffer is that we only listen to thought answers and emotional answers and we exclude all other answers. Is it really true, I'm not safe? The mind says, yes, you really are not safe and you really should worry and think about these things. And the resulting emotion comes as well, fear, stress, worry. So all we're learning to do then is to open up to all the answers that are there, that are available in this moment, even the clock ticking in the background, the feeling of the air on my skin is another kind of answer, right? The feeling of my feet on the ground. So all of this might sound very complicated and a lot to remember, but as we start practising it, then it will see, you'll see it's a lot simpler than it sounds. And once you get the hang of it, you can practise, it becomes very, very easy and beautiful thing to do. And after 30 days, you won't want to stop, you really won't want to stop. So we just ask the question and in the mornings or whenever we do our meditation as well, it's good to do it alongside our meditation, either before or after our contemplation, after meditation or before. And then at moments during the day, if there's a lot of fear comes up or whichever emotion we're asking about, if you can remember in that moment. So I go to the ATM to get some money out. And when I look at the machine, it spits the card back out. It won't give me any money because there's none left in there. And there's this sudden feeling of fear and contraction in the body. And if I can remember then to ask the question, is it really true, I'm not safe? And allow the answers just while I'm walking around, it's helpful. Sometimes there's so much emotion in that moment, we can't even remember the question in that moment. And I used to just write it down on a piece of paper and put it in my, put it in my purse with my card, right next to my card, because it came up very, very often. So let's put this into practice. And if anyone has a karmic pattern with a strong emotion that they feel, so it can either be an emotion that comes up on a regular basis or some emotion that you feel every now and again, but is coming and going in some intensity. So we have lots of time, we have two and a half hours. So we'll take, I'll take some examples here and then we'll take a short break and we can carry on afterwards. So let's start with Samantha, when you're ready.
Hi Helen.
Hi. Lovely to talk to you.
Um, yeah, I've got a very, very intense karmic pattern, which is about bullying.
Yeah.
So when I was younger, I was bullied by everyone, my parents, my siblings, my teachers, everyone at school, like it's really, really intense. And it's come up again this week with, you know, extreme anger or what seems to be extreme anger outside myself. And I managed to be vulnerable instead of being defensive in response to the anger. So I don't know if it's the anger or the vulnerability around that.
So when you say the word vulnerability, is that a negative thing to you or a positive thing?
It's a positive thing.
Right, so that's good. So let's, do you think anger is the main emotion here? Behind it, or is there another one that comes up with it, other than vulnerability?
I would have said the, the pain beneath the anger. So I saw my, my sister is expressing the anger, me expressing the pain that was beneath it. That's how I saw it, saying. That's how I saw us in, in monoliths.
What, what's the pain, what's the emotion that you feel though, just focusing on your body for now? When this happens, something happens in the external world and it's uh, what's the main emotion there?
It was just kind of just emotional, uh, it's hard to explain, like pain, just emotional pain of. Feeling of being attacked.
So, fear, fear or shame, unworthiness, guilt? What word?
It was fear.
Fear, yeah, okay. So obviously I've given my definition of the story behind my fear, but let's look into it anyway. It's good every time to look at the emotion and see what it wants to tell you. So, just for the time being, separating the fear from what was going on in the outer world for now, just to unravel this. What does fear, how does it feel about the world, what's its story underneath? If we get right in touch with the fear, take your time with this and there's no right or wrong answer here.
Not feeling safe.
Not safe, yeah. Which is the kind of root really of being attacked, isn't it? I'm, I'm not safe, something like that. So, what we'll do then is turn that into a question. Is it really true I'm not safe? And we'll just ask it together. And see what happens for, for five minutes or so, if you want to, yeah? So let's just ask this question and I'm just gonna ask you to share with us whatever answers come. Like I said, there might be thoughts, emotions, sensations even, some stuff going on in the body. So is it really true I'm not safe? We're not making any answers appear either, just seeing what comes, as if we and me are just watching a movie, asking this question and just. Sitting together, seeing what comes.
So in, I instantly feel very in, in my head, quite sort of spacious.
Yeah. A spaciousness.
I've got feeling in my throat of. Like a blockage.
You could say uh kind of a sensation answer there, right?
Yeah.
Just coming back to the question every now and again gently. No right or wrong answers, is it really true I'm not safe?
So I'm noticing my heart's beating faster.
Yeah. You're doing great. Just gently asking the question inside and seeing what answers come.
I'm noticing my feet on the ground.
Your feet on the ground, yeah? Just accepting all answers equally, some are pleasant, some are unpleasant. Yeah, but all the same. Is it really true I'm not safe?
I'm noticing the pressure of my seat of the cushion. I'm not thinking.
Strange, right, because it's good to notice as well, when we're asking the question openly, honestly. Sometimes the mind just doesn't engage then, because we're actually curious whether it's really true. Perhaps all of our thoughts have been from the assumption that it is true. Maybe the very first time we questioned, something different begins to happen. Maybe we might even feel a little calmer as well in the body. Can you feel somehow inside that? We've been living the assumption that it's true, right, on some level, the body's been living that experience?
Yeah.
Let's just stay with the question for a few more minutes if you want to. Is it really true I'm not safe?
So I'm back in my throat again, this, okay, a lump in my throat.
It doesn't matter if there's a long time between answers, don't worry, let's just see what comes.
There's a feeling of. The wind spreading out beneath my heart.
Yeah, so like an energetic kind of answer, a movement. Is it really true I'm not safe?
Now I'm noticing my left, my left side. It's a bit like a split feeling.
You're doing great, let's just stay with the question a little longer.
I'm feeling like a sensation from my heart running up my, from my throats.
Some energy moving upwards, yeah. And how does the body feel? Is it more relaxed or less relaxed?
Slightly less relaxed.
But maybe in the questioning, we might be experiencing that tension in a different way. Maybe we're just more able to let it be there. Is it really true I'm not safe?
No.
With some emotion coming up as well, maybe?
Yeah.
Take your time, you're doing amazing. Emotion might not be so pleasant or whatever, but. In the openness of the question, the emotional energy can finally move and leave, leave the system. And perhaps the first time this no comes, no, it's not true. We might also get a yes in the next moment from the mind, yes, it is true, but it's okay. The longer we sit with any question and the more consistently, day by day, we work with the question. The more the answers are gonna change to positive, positive mind answers. Positive emotions, relief, relaxation. Positive sensations. But that's not why we're doing it, we're doing it because from the very first moment we ask this question, we can't suffer. So even though there's emotions now and tension, there's no suffering with them, right? They're just happening and you're just here watching. Hanging out with the question. The question's doing all the heavy lifting for us. Wonderful, wonderful. So let's just suggest staying with this question. Uh, maybe while we wo- work with these other beautiful beings and maybe seeing if you can find five minutes a day just to do this. After thirty days, you'll be in a very, very different position. Because after thirty days, we've formed an entirely new way of thinking. And most importantly, we've stopped using the old assumptions that are just running unless we question them. They're running on autopilot, right?
Yeah.
Wonderful, very, very brave to share, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, uh, we'll go to Christine next.
Hi Helen.
Hi love.
So the, um, I, the karmic pattern that's been coming up um for a while is um. Like, it comes in different forms, like anger, resistance, irritation in different situations. Um, I think. There's like three themes with it, um. I, one, I can't get what I want, um, it's not fair, which I guess goes along that line.
Yeah.
And like resistance, like I don't want to, like I can't do this, I can't. So I guess it's kind of four, um, four different ways it comes.
Okay, so, looking at it now today, what's the strongest emotion that you experience around this? Maybe not right now in this moment or whatever, but what's the? The, the biggest emotion that's shouting loudest?
I guess um irritation, anger, it's, yeah.
Let's go with uh irritation and anger then, um, what do they say to you? Not about the situation, but just about, wh- how do they feel? If anger was a person, how would it feel about life, about itself?
Uh, the bottom line, I guess, is I'm not getting what I want.
And even if we've looked at this before, it's a good idea to check it out every now and again, see if the idea is the same still. So this idea, I, I can't get what I want, right, some, something like that. Does that feel the right idea, the, the root idea? Or how would you phrase it?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so let's just turn that into a question then. And if you want to, we can sit with this together for a few minutes, see what happens. So, is it really true, I can't get what I want? And again, not making any answers appear, just seeing what happens together when we hang out with this question.
Um, like a feeling in my solar plexus comes up.
Yeah. So a kind of energetic answer, yeah. And again, no right or wrong answers, just all accepted equally, some more pleasant than others. But coming back gently to the question, is it really true I can't get what I want?
Um, there's kind of space and then movement like coming up.
Is it really true I can't get what I want? It seemed very true as a separate being, but asking it now, is it really true I can't get what I want?
Yawning and it was in my throat.
So the yawning as well is a kind of answer, yeah? There were whole days when I was contemplating, I would just yawn all day.
Um, a little bit of fear comes.
Yeah, then emotional answer, just doing your best to let it be there and gently coming back to the question.
I think more of the energy around like my solar plexus and heart.
Is it really true I can't get what I want?
Like, and I don't know.
Yeah. And that's a, a different answer than we might have had before, because another yawn. Before, we were really certain it's true, I'm really certain this is true, I can't get what I want, we can feel how much we believe it's true. And finally we arrive at, actually I don't know, I don't know, and that's a, a different place. Again, just gently coming back to the question.
Um, still sensations, just like in my heart area.
Is your body more relaxed or less relaxed when we're asking the question?
Uh, the body's relaxed and I think I just see the sensations, um, like moving. Like the, the energy moving.
And it's, it's, it's good because energy can move, emotions can move, whatever needs to. But just noticing as we're sitting with the question, the body's relaxing anyway by itself. The body's responding to either the assumption or the question. This is what the yawning is, right? The body starts going, oh, thank goodness, I'm finally not having to live this assumption. Which has been going on all the time in the background for us. And after a certain amount of questioning consistently, we simply forget how to believe this. So, let's just sit with it for one more minute and see what happens. You look like you're ready for a nap. Very relaxed.
Yeah.
Is it really true I can't get what I want?
Uh, some emotion comes, like wanting to cry.
That's okay, not so pleasant, but also still not the right or wrong answer, just an answer. And if you need to let it out, it's okay, we're in a nice, safe space here, we're all supporting you. You're doing amazing, take your time if you need a, a second, don't worry. And when you can, just gently coming back to the question. The open space of the question, just gonna allow the emotion to release, allow any answers to come that need to.
Hmm, once the yawn again, it's here.
For this assumption, any assumption, any belief we've had has caused a lot of tension in the body and that starts to finally the body will yawn or stretch or sleep or cry or laugh or shake or whatever it needs to do, just to release that tension.
Yeah.
Perhaps we'll leave it there for now, but you can stay with the question yourself as we go on and just a good idea to sit with this if it's, you know, every day, if you can, just finding a little time to be with this question.
Yeah.
You did amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, Roxanne? And you are ready, Roxanne? All the order got mixed up somehow of the hands, so keep your hands up and I will get to all of you that have your hands up now.
Hi.
Hi Roxanne.
Yes, hi, um. So I, I can't seem to name an emotion, but uh, so there's a pattern. And uh, so I, I I believe it's a sense of not being loved or lovable. And so the way it works out is I, I try to make myself lovable through kind behavior. And oftentimes going too far so that eventually it hurts.
Yeah.
I'm giving so much. Um, and, and then inevitably I am unloved or treated in an unloving way.
You have that experience, yeah, of not being.
That experience, yeah. So, so my belief is, comes back to me eventually uh, through the behavior, the external world. And then I pretty much um, a- and then this tremendous despair as a result. And that leads to, but feels like the nitty gritty of it is self hatred.
Yeah.
That's at the end of, that's at the end of the line is horrible, dark self hatred. And um, so I've been, so I'm, I'm not, I guess I'm not zeroing in on an emotion, but uh, wh- while you were working with the, the previous gal, um, I, I was trying to be quiet with it and I, I feel like the, the underlying belief is I am separate from love. And trying to get it from the outside. But I didn't come up with an emotion, but I don't know if that's.
Yeah, you can work with that. We can, I mean, we could work on the self hatred directly or despair you mentioned, um. To me, that feels like a self hatred. We, how do you feel about looking at that one together?
Yeah, as I said, I do think that might be the core of it all.
It certainly was for me. That was my biggest, biggest thing.
Okay.
So self hatred then, i- if we look at it together, it's really saying something like, I'm totally not how I'm supposed to be, or there's something fundamentally wrong with me, or something like that. Can you get a sense?
Oh yes, I have a very clear sense of that, yeah.
So, so what, what statement is right for you that we can turn into a question? Something like we just mentioned, m- maybe something I've already said or you, something that comes up. For me, this sense, I, I don't deserve even to exist, was at the root of my self hatred, but it might be different for you, something different maybe.
Yeah, it feels a little different than that. I don't deserve to. I, I think I don't want to exist.
Yeah.
It's like that, kind of like a child, I didn't ask for this, why do I have to deal with this?
Yeah.
So, um.
Because, let me just work with that a little bit. Because why, why don't you want to be here? Is it because it's too hard? I mean, consciously, we know none of this is true, but we're just working with the beliefs deep down in the ego, so.
I, I, I think because it, it, it hurts so much. It's so painful.
Life is painful or something like that?
Hmm.
Or dangerous? Could life be dangerous or painful or?
So dangerous. It is crazy dangerous, yes.
Does that feel like the one we've hit on there, the right one?
I guess, so the self hatred is not a place, we don't work directly with that.
They're, they're kind of linked really, because if I think, um, the world is dangerous, th- this is how it was for me at least, maybe it'll resonate, maybe not. The world is dangerous and I'm in danger all the time, all the time. So I'm constantly trying to change myself and make myself better so that I feel safer. And I can't manage to do that, um, and uh, you know, to improve myself and to feel safer, so that turns back inside, like what's wrong with me, why can't I fix myself, you know, um, and it kind of spirals from there. So, um, either the belief, belief behind the self hatred or this feeling that life isn't safe, is life is dangerous. We could work on either of those, but I think that the same root underneath maybe.
I think I see what you're getting at, yeah. Yeah, so the sense of danger and then I feel desperately afraid and then that turns into the self hatred.
Maybe it was a sense of being fundamentally flawed and um, constant uh, self improvement project going on that never really succeeded because actually there was nothing wrong with me. I didn't know that at the time. So then the failure to improve myself just spiraled into self hatred. All the attempts to improve myself was so I felt safer. You know, that kind of cycle.
Okay, I, 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 I think maybe the dangerous, life is dangerous.
Yeah, let's, let's work with that. And once you know the, the way to do it, uh, you're comfortable with it, you can put any question in there, you know, for thirty days, so it's more uh, learning the technique rather than making sure we've got the exact right question right now, but we, we can ask, um, is it really true, life isn't safe or life is dangerous? Yeah, if that feels good.
Yep, is it true, life is not safe? Sure, yes.
And just like uh, the other people, if, if you just want to share what answers come with us, if you don't mind. It doesn't matter if there's a long gap between answers. Again, not making any answers appear, not working hard here, we're just asking this question, coming back to the question and seeing what happens. Is it really true, life is dangerous?
The first thing is a, a little bit of a rot gut feeling in my stomach.
Mm-hmm. A kind of sensation answer in the stomach.
Hmm, mm-hmm. And um, I, I have a constant buzz in my ear and I'm, I'm very aware of that right now.
And just coming back to the question gently, is it really true, life is dangerous?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking about, um, the thought comes of my, my neighborhood is a, is a safe neighborhood and I'm grateful for that.
So we'll get kind of positive and negative thought answers, right? Here's a positive one, I'm living in a safe neighborhood. And it's okay, all, all answers are equal, just allowing it and then coming back to the question.
I am. A wave of sadness. It's not so much a memory because I don't remember it, but um, the recalling of the story of my birth that, um, you know, I almost died and, and they saved me. And I, um, I always wonder why they, why they saved me. Why I could have just let go?
Take your time, if you need to take a moment, it's okay. Being really, really brave and everyone here is loving and supporting you. We're all on the same journey together. So even this experience, I, even in the birth process itself, even this experience is a reflection of this belief that life is dangerous. Even in the process of uh, being born, this belief is already playing out, reflecting as our experience. Whenever you can, just gently coming back to the question, is it really true, life is dangerous?
Very loving mother.
A lovely thought answer, yeah? Just in the openness of the questioning itself, our energy system is open when we're questioning. It's closed when we're assuming something to be true. And the first time it's open like this, emotions can move that if wanted to and needed to move. So it's not so pleasant, but finally these things can be released. Is it really true, life is dangerous?
Yeah. Where I grew up was not, um, it was very city and uh, we were broken into several times. It was definitely not a sense of safety.
Yeah. So kind of memory answer, a memory coming up. And just com- coming back to the question gently. Letting the question do the work for us here.
It's a memory of, I was a teenager. So I was teaching younger children a class in gymnastics and this is gonna sound so random, but they were awful. They just didn't want to, they were kids and they just didn't want to be there. They wanted to be doing something else. And uh, I yelled, I was so upset. It was, I didn't, I didn't teach anymore. I just lost control and that was, I think that's the first time I can remember losing control.
Yeah. Just allowing the memory and coming back to the question gently.
I'm just thinking of I was a very good student and I think I was really trying to find my safety with my, my achievement, academic achievement. That will do it. That'll be my safety.
And the recognition comes deeper that we can never really find that sense of safety in the outer world with this belief there in the first place, right? You can't have that kind of experience we want with this assumption going on underneath. So questioning like this, we'll be finally free of this assumption and our experience can begin to change, to reflect that sense of safety that's growing inside.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Yeah, we, we're looking for safety from our experiences in the world, right? When I have the right job, the right education, the right relationship, whatever, the right academic achievement, then I'll feel safe, set my mind. Um, but that can never really happen, that feeling of safety while this belief is there in the background. Our experiences have to keep mirroring, reflecting this belief back to us that life is dangerous.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which is why all the academic achievement never made me feel safe.
Yeah.
Never gonna.
For me, there's the same, our whole life looking for safety from the outside and finally realizing it can only come from inside like this, by finding that inside which is always safe and allowing that to permeate our mind and body and just undoing these egoic beliefs as well, like we're doing here, just by gently questioning. Wonderful. So maybe staying with this question for the next few minutes, uh, and maybe asking it every day. Um, it'd be good to just take five or ten minutes. Like, all we've done here is ask the question and allowed all the answers to come. None are right, none are wrong, um, just letting them come. Noticing in that uh, questioning process, we're not suffering, even while strong emotions come up, we can't really resist them while we're questioning. So there's a feeling of relief and um, releasing going on too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being so brave.
Thank you.
Lots of love. Uh, Christina, uh, Christina Nunez, I hope I'm saying that correctly.
Hola.
Hola. Wonderful. So, um, what would you like to work on? What belief would you like to work on, emotion rather, sorry?
In the first place, I would like to thank you because you have really helped me to separate mine from what I really am.
Thank you, thank you.
With your book, Dissolving the Ego, I really get to understand how it works and it really uh, relieved me and lower, listen, my anxiety, anxiety.
Thank you.
The emotion I have with money is this feeling of anguish when I have it.
Anguish, was that, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah. So let's look at the anguish itself, uh, just the feeling in the body and see what, what belief comes when we look at that.
Kind of, uh, I, the, that's a thought that the money is not going to be enough. So my mind, uh, previously spends the money, so I don't think I have enough.
So just for the moment, taking the money away from the anguish, because mind is trying to say, as we were talking about, it's looking for a cause for the anguish, it's looking for, um, a reason for the anguish, but the financial thing and the anguish are the same one thing. So just for a moment, just feeling anguish, the anguish and um, mind will try to explain why you're feeling that way. But seeing if the anguish itself, if there's not a belief underneath it, deeper down. Have a feel into it, take a moment. Or we could ask, what happens if the money runs out? That's another way to get to the feeling. For me, when I ask myself that question, I'm, I'm not safe, I'm in danger. I'll die, I'll starve, those things.
Siento la sensación como que no, no va a pasar nada y lo que pasa de que en estos días hice un, hice, vi tu video hace unos días atrás, los últimos y me hice esa pregunta como de soltar eh, una parte, esa parte misma cuando, eh, estuviera dinero y me resultó muy bien porque como que me sentí súper aliviada y como que, eh, sentí esa sensación de, de que no va a pasar absolutamente nada si ocupo el dinero.
One minute for translation.
I've already, I've already done this and now I have the sensation that nothing wrong is going to happen because I saw, I watched one of your videos when you invited to release that, just what happens if it runs out. So now I think, I feel there's not, nothing going to happen.
Okay, and, um, so that's good. You can see that, um, it's not related to anything in the world. As in, the feeling is just a way of thinking, reflecting a way of thinking. And maybe just if you need to, um, later if it comes back, this feeling of anguish, just, um, using this contemplation process like we've done with other people here. Do you feel okay to use it by yourself, the questioning?
Eh, sí me he cuestionado pero cuando me cuestiono siento la sensación de alivio y de, y de paz. Pero después me vienen unas, unas voces diciéndome, bueno, diciéndome que, ¿y qué vamos a hacer ahora? Eh, ¿en qué momento vamos a tener?, ¿cómo va a venir?, ¿qué podemos hacer? Entonces como que I have already contemplated that and in doing so, I have felt fear. But then that voice has come saying, what are we going to the next?
So it's just a good idea then to do it for 30 days in a row if you haven't already, just to make sure that way of thinking has gone completely from, from you. Have you done 30 days consistently with this?
No, porque lo he hecho con, con otras cosas, no con el dinero en sí. Ahora hace poco comencé con, eh, con la parte económica porque más antes me molestaba mucho más la emoción que sentía por otras cosas, como la ansiedad o, o emoción así de angustia, pero no por el dinero. Bueno, sí, pero había otro momento. No, I haven't, I haven't that, uh, I haven't done it with money consistently. I, I, I have done the contemplation with other subjects, but not with money consistently.
Okay, so that would be my advice then, just to apply this here for 30 days and, uh, you might find things change like you've experienced in other places.
Ya. Y está bien escuchar, eh, como diferentes voces que te van diciendo, será la misma mente que te dice, eh, te da como diferentes respuestas, pero a la vez como que te preguntan, ¿es la misma mente de la mente subconsciente como la mente consciente? O sea, me refiero a que, ¿quién habla ahí? O se habla una mente o es la misma mente con diferentes, eh, como expectativas de voz o de tanto de diferente enfoques.
Sorry.
Is it the same mind who talks? Or is it different perspectives of the mind, like conscious mind and unconscious mind and subconscious mind?
There's no such thing really as a subconscious mind. There's only assumptions that we haven't challenged, uh, as yet, beliefs that we haven't questioned like this. What we're calling subconscious or unconscious is really only a thought that we so believe, it seems so true. Um, for example, it seems so true that I'm not safe, that I don't even realise I'm thinking that anymore. It's so automatic. When it runs through the brain, we don't even notice it. So unconscious or subconscious are still part of the mind. But if we had a mind, uh, if we imagine mind was, um, a set of drawers and, um, the top drawer says on it labelled, obviously true thoughts, obviously true, so true, we don't even ever need to look at them again. So these thoughts that we're looking at here, uh, in contemplation are, um, from that top drawer, you know, it's obvious I'm not safe. My life keeps showing me, it's obvious I'm not good enough. My life keeps agreeing with me. It's obvious I can't get what I want. My life keeps agreeing with that all the time. So as we question, as we look for the emotion and then go to the belief, we're bringing them out of that top drawer, having a look at them, seeing they're not true. And then we can put them in the bottom drawer that says, totally not true. Don't even need to look at it again.
Gracias, muchas gracias.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to Ruth and then we'll take a little break. Um, so if you all keep your hands up, we'll take the, um, uh, hands are up now and no more, because we'll probably run out of time. So if you keep your hands up even over the break, uh, we'll get to everyone. Uh, Ruth, when you're ready.
Uh, thank you. Can you hear me all right?
I can, wonderful, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, um, there are several things that I could bring up, but I think what's been very current for me this year.
Take your time.
My mum passed away in February.
Yeah.
I didn't think I would, I thought, I thought I would be fine talking about it. Um, and then two weeks ago, um, our little dog had to be put to sleep. Um, so there's been a lot and then just this last Friday, my mum's house was finally sold. So I can't go back there anymore. Um, and it's, it's just this sadness that sits within me and it feels like it's, it's bigger than just what's happening in my life right now.
Yeah.
Um, and that, you know, I have all sorts of thoughts that are telling me, come on, you know, you know better than this, you know, but there again, it, it's very active in me, this grief and sadness.
We, we notice these two perspectives, this one conscious aspect of ourselves that, um, ob- obviously it's clearer to that part of ourselves that it's, it's not about what we think it's about, you know what? And then there's also the egoic energies within us that still really believe these ideas and you can tell how much we're still believing something on some level, by the amount of emotion that comes, right? So if we can start to look at these non-judgmentally, um, it's unpleasant, but it's also okay that some part of me really feels this, this is very true, this sadness, this grief. Because if we start to judge ourselves for it, it's just gonna go around and around, you know? So accepting, okay, some part of me feels this emotion, sadness, grief. What, let's have a look at what the belief is underneath. What does grief say? What's the idea behind grief? Not about a particular person or our beloved pets, but what does grief feel about the world, about itself, if it was a person? I know it seems weird, but what would it say?
Something to do with hopelessness, maybe.
Yeah. Losing hope for water about being able to be happy, to be peaceful.
Uh.
What, what is it?
That just, just that things will never be the same.
And why, why do we want them to be the same? Strange question, I know, but
Yeah, no, I, I get it, um.
What do we feel? What did we feel before that we feel has gone now? There's a hopelessness that we'll never feel that way again on some level, right?
Just I think it's connection.
Mm-hmm, connection. So there's a kind of a belief that says, when this person or this animal has gone, I can't feel that connection anymore, right? Something like that. The connection, the intimacy that came was from that being, not from inside, the mind thinks, so. Let's ask this question, is it really true, I can't feel that connection anymore? Does that feel irrelevant, question to ask or?
I, I don't know whether it's quite in the, I don't, it's really hard to sort of
What, what question would you like?
Actually pinpoint what, what it really is. Um, what, what is grief really saying? Um.
For me, when I asked my grief this question, it said, um, I've lost my happiness, it's gone and I can't get it back. I've lost, I've lost happiness, I've lost the capacity to be happy even. And it sounds kind of intense, but that's what came, something like that. And just sharing in case it
Yeah, it's a, it is something to do with the capacity for just, um. Something to do with being authentic, I don't know, it's really hard. Sorry Helen, I can't. Um.
Often it's hard because we've never really looked like this, right? We just feel the emotion and we feel it and we never really investigate. Maybe we haven't known how or, so finally looking like this, it can be a little challenging at first. What is it I think I'm missing that I had before when they were here?
I think because I've narrowed, seem to have narrowed my life down. Maybe it's not about this at all, but I've narrowed my life down quite a bit in terms of my interactions with people. And my mum was, because she, her health was declining, I was seeing her regularly and, you know, helping her. And the same with our little dog, he was, you know, his health declined, he was 19 when he died. So it's something to do with, I've narrowed my life down quite a lot and I, I don't, um.
Could you feel like
I don't know how to, I don't know where to go. I don't, I feel lost.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Let's, let's work with that then, that seems like there's a little bit of charge behind it.
Yeah.
Let's, let's sit with the question together then, is it really true, I'm lost?
Hmm.
And again, just allowing all the answers, seeing what happens, not making any answers come. Definitely not working hard, just, is it really true, I'm lost?
I mean, there's a thought in my head that, about being ridiculous.
There's a thought answer, right? It's, it's gonna have both opinions. Certain times it'll say, yes, you're really lost. Other times it'll say, of course you're not. And we just allow both, they're just both mind answers, thought answers.
I can hear the clock ticking.
Yeah, another answer.
And I, I'm noticing the sensations of sitting here on the bed.
Yeah.
In my body.
You're doing really well, just coming back gently to the question, is it really true, I'm lost?
There's a There's a kind of a nothingness.
A nothingness, emptiness, yeah. And again, even though this is, um, the real self presenting itself, then it's still not the right answer, it's just another answer, we welcome it like anything else. Coming back to the question.
I think, um, I'm getting the, the question, I'm lost, is it true, I'm lost is really, is it true, I'm alone?
Yeah, well, we can switch it to that if that feels more alive inside as a question. Does that feel more relevant, that one?
Hmm, I think so.
Is it really true, I'm alone?
Just, um, quite present, aware of the screen, aware of what I can hear.
Yes, awareness is an answer, yeah. Like nothingness, same same.
Yeah.
And just gently coming back to the question.
Phone just, my phone went, I'd forgotten to switch my phone off, so there was the phone going. So not quite alone as I
Not quite alone, yes. And just, again, acknowledging all these answers. Coming back to the question.
Also, I, I don't know. I don't know if I'm alone.
Hmm. And that's good, right? Because the emotion, the sadness, et cetera, it's coming from this idea that I do know, I really do know I'm alone, I'm certain of it, somewhere inside, deep down. So I don't know, as perhaps as honest an answer as the egoic sense of self can give us, it's good.
I think so, yeah, yeah.
Just welcoming that too and staying with the question. Let's just stay with it for one more minute together, see what happens.
There's a real yearning to know that I'm not separate, that there's no separation.
And here is the root of loneliness, right? If there's anyone to lose, I will feel lonely at some point, yeah.
Yes, yes. Yeah.
And again, just treating this yearning as just another kind of answer, it's okay. And coming back to the question. How are you feeling now, more relaxed or?
Yes, like, you, you know, that I could feel I could talk about my mum or our little dog, you know, his name was Wiggy. Um, I could talk about him without feeling too emotional, you know, feeling overwhelmed with emotion now, so.
Beautiful. So just by staying with this question, we've got to the point where even in a few minutes, if, um, we're starting to experience the opposite, which is without this assumption, I am alone or I can be alone. And that is the capacity to talk about forms that have come and gone and not to feel an intense emotion around, not a sense of loneliness with it. So again, I'd just suggest sitting with this for five or 10 minutes a day, just like we've done, as if you're just asking the question, see what comes up. And probably best for 30 days, just to make sure we've finally gotten rid of the root, the deep root of this and, um.
Yeah, thank you.
Again, not looking for any spectacular results, just noticing the longer we ask the question, the better we start to feel inside, right?
Yes, yes, thank you, yes, it's helpful.
Thank you for being brave.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, let's stop this recording, we'll take a 10-minute break.